Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is April 5th, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Before we get started today, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence for our hometown hero, Army Warrant Officer Aaron Healy, who perished with eight of his comrades during a training exercise at Fort Campbell last week. Wherean Officer Healy grew up, right here in Cape Coral, he attended Idabaker High School. He enlisted in the Army in 2010. He served two tours in Afghanistan and eventually became a Black Hawk pilot, assigned to the 101st Airborne Division. As a community, we honor Warrant Officer Healy's service and his ultimate sacrifice to our nation. And this time of morning, I'd like for everyone in our community to keep his family's thoughts and prayers moving forward, because I know they're going to need our help to get through this unbelievable time for their family. So please, a moment of silence for Warrant Officer Healy. Thank you, and may he rest in peace. Councilmember Steinke will do the invocation and also the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bow your heads, please. Father, thank you for this time for us to come together. Pray that you would be with those that are here for their messages to be heard. We pray that you would let them fall upon open ears, concerned hearts and minds. Father, as our nation goes through these troubling times, we pray that you'd be with national leaders and state leaders as well, as we all guide our country from each area of the country, adding up to our whole nation. Father, as we make our way through our meeting this night, we pray that you would allow all the important words to be said and all of those same words to be heard. Pray that you would bless this group, bless the minds and the hearts of those that will be making decisions, and lead us to a more successful future. Pray that you'd be with those that we've lost. We pray that you would be with those that remain with their memory. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Cosden will be arriving after roll call, and I will mark her so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinke?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda, or do I have a motion to adopt? The agenda is presented.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? See a nun. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of March 15th, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next motion for approve the minutes for the regular meeting of March 22nd, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We'll be utilizing the podium to my left, your right. I would just ask everyone, this is a professional business meeting, no applause. So anyone that wishes to come up and speak, we want to make sure that we give everybody the opportunity and do it in a timely manner. If you want to line up, you know, down the middle aisle there, that'll be fine. Go ahead, sir. State your name.
Lawrence Kemmer. I'm appearing here to discuss a particular neighborhood house in disrepair and probably other homes that are becoming reoccupied without proper water damage repairs. These houses will place burdens upon the healthcare systems and taxpayers and the upcoming respiratory issues. What can be done now rather than future occupants litigate later on? On October 22nd, on October 22, a house was purchased across the street from me at 1518 Southwest 52nd Lane, which was listed for $200,000. In the listing, it was stated this house might not be habitable. It was basically bought from the land. This house has code violations with roof, electrical, and yard is overgrown with garbage everywhere. There's no indication based on the limited debris and the curb and small dumpster loads that after nearly two feet of standing water in this very low house, that any interior walls were fixed but were just painted. Cabins are still there, appliances are still there. I'm looking for guidance. I don't know if this is the correct forum for it, what Cape Coral can take for this out-of-state owner and probably others in the same boat here to remove the bottom four feet of the drywall, and whatever other measures are prudent that you guys do, so we don't have a healthcare burden on this county and on this city. The solution is litigation by victims, the renters, many months down the road with respiratory issues. That's pretty poor solution for society when you get lawyers involved. This house is incredibly rundown, hasn't had AC for 10 years. It always floods. I've known the owners for 20 years. They never went back after the hurricane. Thirteen neighbors, I went up to 13 neighbors and asked them, and they asked me to come here, right around the proximity, about $100,000 in property taxes. At very least, clean this place up. Code has been there, and they're doing the best they can. This owner, basically, out of state, he puts a roof on, didn't have a permit, and now he's putting the shingles on without the dry-in permit, and he put a new service panel in. A neighbor saw this when the garage door was open without a permit. And I'd just like to know if there's a path, a toolkit, something that can be done about guys doing this stuff, because it's going to be all over this place. That's it, right there. I must say, this is common. There's the consequences when people start reaching for their DR 486s and start lowering the valuation, so they pay lower property taxes when you have a dump across the street.
Thank you. Council will, just for everyone's information, once we go through the citizens' input, then council will weigh in at that time.
Do you want to hand this to somebody?
If you'd like to give it to the city clerk, you're more than welcome to do that.
It's the city clerk. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Ready? I'm here to speak against the change in parks and rec to multifamily for Hunter's Run Golf Course. My name is Colleen Simon. We moved here in 1973, built our first house by the Cape Coral Country Club Golf Course. We built our second house in 1983, right on what is now known as Hunter's Run Golf Course. My backyard property line is the property line to the golf course. In 2007, we raised our voices together against a similar request to change parks and recs also at that time, and our voices together, now 16 years later, I am 16 years older, the golf course still exists, and so does its designation as Parks and Rec. And here we are again, raising our voices again in the same matter for the same reason, to keep our parks and rec. This time, together with many more voices, the City Planning Division recommends denial. And from their report, which we stand behind, some of their points, we stand behind all of them, are location. The placement of the proposed multifamily land use would occur at a location that is not conducive to proper larger-scale multifamily development. The location is not a transitional area between higher and lower land use and occurs in the midst of a low-density, single-family residential neighborhood. Access. The development lacks specific access to the larger roadways that promote safe and effective travel to and from the site, instead using a limited two-lane local roadway within the neighborhood. Traffic. The additional traffic presents potential negative impacts with the residential neighborhood, which may be further compounded by the limited intersection at the arterial, which may actually direct more traffic through the neighborhood itself. Out of scale. The larger densities of the multifamily district and subsequent zoning districts coupled with the larger allowable maximum heights would lead to a development that is out of scale with the surrounding low-scale, low-height, single-family residential neighborhood. As a transitional classification, the larger scale would serve as a proper buffer, but nestled within the neighborhood, the larger scale is inappropriate and detrimental to the overall character of the neighborhood. And I would also like to add that we do agree that our city, as we grow, needs more multifamily. There's no doubt about that. But we all can see with our own eyes what exists with multifamily, what is being built new with multifamily, and I just got a report yesterday afternoon where it will blow our minds. We like to vet and find out fact versus fiction, but there are vacant multifamily lots already zoned to build.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lots.
Thank you. I asked before the meeting that we don't applaud. If you're going to applaud, then you will not be in the room, so please, hold your applause. If you'd like to raise your hand in support, I'm okay with that. And we're here to listen, but we just got to make sure it's ordered.
Good evening, Mayor Gunter, council members. My name is Erica Pease. I've been a Cape Coral resident since 1998, and after a stint in Michigan and in Chicago, living our lives, we came back to beautiful Cape Coral, and we built a home on this golf course. If you guys look at the slide that you see in front of you, this is an overlay of the potential development, and while we know that there may be some changes coming back, if you follow along the blue property line there, you can see that there is a single entry for this complex. The over 3,000 cars that were estimated based on city planning research, over 3,000 cars going down my road alone. I have a five-and-a-half-year-old. This was not in our plans. We need a safe environment for our Halloween activities to have him grow. We have a lot of children in this area. These cars are not acceptable. There is no main arterial to exit onto Santa Barbara. Nicholas, right now, is ripped up and will be put together soon, but there is no logical reason for over 3,000 cars in this area alone. As you move around the property, you have parking lots on people's, on their property lines. We have dumpsters right next to people's houses. Again, we did not buy in this area for these views. We need the support. We need, we need you to understand that the initial planning and research that has gone in, they have denied the proposal. It has not made sense for this area, the scale, the traffic, the loss of wildlife, the loss of recreation space that is affordable, that is walkable for a lot of our seniors in this area. You can't just hop on Palmetto Pine. So we need everyone on council to really understand this area was set by the city to be preserved as parks and recreation space. We are asking you to help us to keep this park and recreation space. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Much power.
She's going to speak after, so I need to borrow this. Good afternoon. Thank you, first of all, for letting us all be here expressing our thoughts about the next project that is presently being proposed for the change of planning. I wanted to introduce my daughter. We live on the golf course, and of course, this affects all of us, but she particularly wanted to express what's in her mind, if you will give her a few moments. Her name is Samantha Dixon, and I'll let her do the rest and speak about that slide over there.
Hi. Thank you all for letting me talk to you today. And my name is Samantha Dixon, and I'm in third grade. What I'd like to tell you all about today is the golf course, and I actually, I live on the golf course. So the first thing that I'm here to talk about with you all is that me and my dad like to play scooter, and that if, and there's no sidewalk, so I can't just go on the sidewalk and just do it on the sidewalk, because I like doing it in the streets at night, and if there's going to be so many cars running around in my streets, then I can't do that anymore. Neither can any other kid in the community that has all the cars, because it won't be safe anymore, neither for the wildlife, like rabbits, squirrels, lizards, any wildlife that likes crossing the street in the day or nighttime. They can't, because the streets are going to be flooded with cars. And the second thing that I'd like to talk about is that there's, there's, there's also that, there's going to be, like, there's, so the second thing I'm here to talk about is that there's going to be a parking lot and, like, around my backyard. Like, if you pass my backyard, there's going to be a parking lot, and we can have that, because there's going to be cars over there, too. And what about the wildlife? Now, I've saved the best thing for last, is there is an owl on the mount in the golf course over there, and that owl, I like it, and one day, I was in that sand, and I looked for it. That sand, actually, over there, there's the owl's nest, and it has two eggs, and what would happen if they moved the owl and the eggs is that there's going to be more, no more wildlife, because they're going to move it all, or all the wildlife is going to move away. Thank you all for letting me talk to you today.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Charlie Pease, and I represent, along with several other folks here, an organization called Keep Our Parks and Rec. We have a website, keepourparksandrec.com. We've organized in a very short time. I want to draw your attention to the screen, to the City of Cape Coral Future Land Use Map 2050. This was updated in December, four months after the developer submitted their application. I want to go to the next slide, and on the next slide, it zooms in. And at the bottom right-hand corner there, just to orient you, from south to north, you'll see the Cape Coral Golf Club, the old Cape Coral Country Club. This city council and previous city councils have consistently held the position for the past 17 or so years that they will not change that old golf club from Parks and Recreation Land Use to anything else, including single-family. D.R. Horton found out, found that out the hard way. If you, if you continue up Santa Barbara Boulevard there, you can see the circle around the end with the arrow pointing to it. That is our property, our piece of paradise, 29 acres, the historical Cape Coral Executive Golf Course, which was owned by the same entity for decades as the Cape Coral Golf and Tennis Resort, later called the Golf Club of Cape Coral. That is our paradise. There are people in this room who bought 40 years ago, or built 40 years ago, because that was their backyard, they knew it was Parks and Rec green space. There are people in this room who purchased nine months ago, a realtor who's very successful, had no idea until I knocked on her door two days ago. There are people in this room who have pending contracts right now, and they've been given three days to decide, because we were hit with this in the darkness of the night. Not one person in this room, right here, had any idea this was happening. And there are people in this room, like me and my wife, who built our dream home and are taking occupancy literally this week. How can we trust our government? How can we trust anyone in terms of council and so on if we can't trust this map to make decisions that impact our families and that impact our quality of life and impact our finances? At this time, I want to take a moment to ask anyone in here who supports Keep Our Parks and Rec and our position to stand up and say aye. What we ask tonight is that council take some sort of public position on this and put this to bed. If we have to go further, we will, but please, take a public position and say that you will keep this Parks and Rec designation. There is no compromise here. Our position is no compromise. Parks and Rec forever. We know you may not be able to take a procedural vote tonight, but make that commitment publicly. And I want to close with one final thing. This was the first sunrise I ever saw from the new house we just built. It was Friday morning, and someone in this room, someone important in this room, I was on the phone with them, and I was in tears, because I was thinking about my son and our future and what we dreamt of and why we built this house, and I couldn't believe what I'd been dealing with for the past 10 days, 24/7. But I'm a very positive person. I want to finish with one quote by Victor Hugo, and that is, "Even the darkest night will end, and the sun will rise." And I pray to God that you all make the right decision and make the right decision today, so please, I can spend more than four hours in the past 10 days with my 10, with my five-year-old.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Gordon Ulch. I live in the Northwest Cape, across from Crystal Lake, scheduled to become a park somewhere around the year 3000. And I'm here to talk about two topics very briefly. One is you're searching for a new city manager. I've been here for 17 years. I've watched this process play through, the same game plan every time, spend a lot of money, bring somebody in from outside who's not familiar with the Cape, and then fire them later on. We have sitting right here Mr. Michael Schusen, who grew up in the Cape, knows the Cape, knows the Cape government, has been working for it for decades. I know him, and he is a man of integrity and ability, and I think that the city should do whatever they can to court him for this position. I didn't speak to Mike about this beforehand, but it's always easier to ask forgiveness than permission. The second point deals with the Utilities Expansion Committee, which, or the Utilities Expansion Program. I know something about this, because I chaired a committee on this for a year, spent hundreds of hours on it some years ago. Apparently, the check got lost in the mail. But I want to talk about the 6.5% interest rate for people who can't afford to pay for this upfront. If you take that loan out, just as simple interest, you will pay $64,350 in interest alone. And if you do it for 20 years, you'll pay $42,900. I don't have a dog in this fight. I live so far up that I'll be 103 by the time utilities get there, and since my life plan is to be shot by a jealous husband at 102, I don't think this is going to be a problem. But it is a problem for some people. The city should not be in the position of making money off their constituents. This is a rate that's even higher than banks are charging for home mortgages, so I think they should severely consider lowering this interest rate considerably below the 6.5% right now. And that's what I have to say. Thank you very much for your time and the opportunity.
Gentlemen and ladies, my name is Douglas Cozy. I live on Southeast Fifth Place for the last over 23 years now, about three blocks from the golf course. And this is the first time I have felt it necessary to come and speak in the council chambers, and it's in regard to the zoning change for Hunter's Run Golf Course, from single-family to multifamily. Just wanted to say that I totally support the position of Cape Coral City Planning Division Staff Report dated February 21st, 2023. To deny this request, in my opinion, the golf course, as it stands, is an asset to the neighborhood that I live in, near Cultural Park, the City of Cape Coral in general, and also Lee County, providing green space, recreational opportunities, and wildlife habitat. It attracts new residents and keeps the existing ones that we have. A 650-unit complex would be a liability in this totally residential area. The increase in traffic would be dangerous to children walking to bus stops, playing in the streets, and also to dog walkers and joggers and walkers, as there are no sidewalks in this community at all, and no direct access to any major route. Santa Barbara, Nicholas, Cultural Park, all would be difficult to get to from this community. Also, the loss of green space would increase the occurrence of flooding in the streets and storm sewer backups, which are common occurrences in this area. I urge the council to deny this request and even purchase the property back from its current owner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council members, and thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak. My name is Karen Jones. I come from Maryland. I am retiring after 30 long years working in the federal government. I have a 25-year-old daughter who moved down here with me, as well as my granddaughter, who is just under two years old. She'll be celebrating her second birthday on May the 21st. My home is in the picture here. It's the one with the brown roof. It's the one with the brown roof, and it's the one that's slated to be next to one of the points of entry for the, the development that's there. I don't have anything prepared, I just wanted to speak from my heart. I moved from Maryland, from a home that I lived in, that had in its back a lake. But the neighborhood that we, we lived in changed drastically after it was, the, the greenlands that we had around, it was once a golf course as well. They, it was developed with apartments. And I lived there for twenty-one years, the impact on the community was tremendous. And I, and I moved here not with the expectation that I would be back in that same situation. I do want to just, I can't state enough, and I'm sure everyone else has stated as well, how important it is for green space. It's also important to note that not just in terms of green space for recreation, for activity, but for, before the neighborhood, the beautification of the neighborhood, with the intentions of a development of this particular area. My, you know, my, my daughter, my granddaughter, being able to play in the front yard. We have a, we live on Southeast Tenth Lane, that is about 300 feet in terms of, of the distance from the hairpin turn to the, to the tee. With the, the prospect of an influx of, of, you know, thousands of cars coming through day and night, it's, it, it just will no longer be a safe place for my granddaughter to run out in the front yard, to run out in the backyard. I've, I drove around, because I'm, I'm new to this area, I just moved here in April of last year, and, um, May of last year. And just to look at, on Skyline and Chiquita, on Pine Island, the four and five-story buildings that are, have been erected, I, to have that in my backyard, so I no longer can sit out there with, with my granddaughter with a telescope and look at the stars, I'll be looking at people looking down back at me. It's, I would, I would just like to say that I am strongly opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Tom Kenna. I'm a resident a couple blocks over from everybody off the golf course. I'm also the athletic director at Cape Coral High School. Most days, probably about two or three times a week, I get out, I run. I see many of these, my neighbors out there walking, walking their dogs. For me, it's pretty simple. Thousands of cars versus kids in the road. Car versus kid, car wins every time. I want my kids to go on bike rides every day. When we get home from school, I'm like, hey, you're not getting on your video games, you're going out to play. Get on your bike, go for a ride. This new complex, car versus kid, car wins every time. Please take that into consideration when you decide what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Mike West. We built our house on Southeast Tenth Terrace, twenty-one years ago. When Irma came through, we had water up above our knees in the street in front of the house. And I don't think this development is going to improve that any. And should you do this, the people who live there have no vested interest in that property. To them, it's a place to park their car and their, hang their hat. They don't care if they throw their garbage in the dumpster, or if they throw it on the ground. And they'll be coming home at three o'clock in the morning, shining their headlights into the people that live around the golf course, house, their bedrooms. I don't think any one of you would want to live under those conditions. So I think you should make a better judgment, and not put these people through the same thing. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak during citizens' input? No, ma'am, that's not allowed. No, ma'am.
My name is Cheryl Scaramero, I live at 307 Southeast Tenth Terrace. I moved here almost four years ago. I was gifted by two people in my family from Massachusetts, this book. How do I get it in the picture? Cape Coral, and everything about this. This was the winter, I mean, excuse me, the waterfront wonderland to come to, that the Rosen Brothers developed. And along with Connie Mack, they sold this entire city to the United States, Northerners, people from Germany. They went through many, many deals, some of them pretty shifty, and they almost went bankrupt. And they ended up going bankrupt because of the way they did things. And in this book, if I may read, "The first major hiccup in the Gulf Americans' business plan came in 1967, when The Wall Street Journal published a story that accused Gulf America and the Rosen's of fishy practices." What's happening now, it has been spoken to you. A lot of us received no phone call, no door knock, no come-to council meeting, that this is a proposal that's going to happen. We're blindsided. People that are, they haven't even put the towels in their closet yet. They're moving in, and they all have young children. I'm getting close to retirement age, as well as a lot of the people that I see. I see people that come on vacation, they're snowbirds. I see people on dates. You all say that you have no place for the young stu, um, young people in this city. I've seen double dates, they each get a cart, they're hysterical to watch. There are four teenage boys, and I don't know their names, but they're the barefoot golfers. They're hysterical to watch. Today, my white goose, I don't know what he is, he's a little bit crazy. And I think he has like, some type of libation at lunch, there he is running across the course. You can't allow twenty-seven acres to become mixed income. It's not proper. Why would you build mixed income, not on a bus route? Not everyone who is low-income can afford a car. You want something that has bus route on it. There's no bus that goes on Nicholas Parkway. There's none that goes on Southeast Tenth Terrace. But I can tell you this much, I work nights, I come home between quarter of eight in the morning and eight fifteen. When Nicholas Parkway is backed up, they come down that street, the side street, I believe it is South Terrace, I believe is the correct words, then it goes, takes the left onto Tenth Terrace. I have called the police more than once in the four years I have lived here, because it is now a speedway. There are eighteen-wheelers going down that street. The only eighteen-wheeler that should go down Southeast Tenth Terrace is one that goes to CVS. Public trucks don't belong down there, nor do any other business trucks unless you are doing absolute service to any home. Please consider, and thank you for, listen, my time is up. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Betsy West. I'm with Mike West on Tenth Terrace. I do not speak well, but I'm going to show you pictures, and this is from July 2021. It's just a rain, it's not a storm, it's just a normal rain, just to show you what the streets look flooded.
We have to have the city clerk make sure those pictures are okay.
They could, they could do whatever they want with these. They're just... There's four of them. Just showing the flooding and the streets.
Yeah, we just have to approve the pictures first, that's all.
Just showing, I know you can't see, but that's the street across. The fire hydrant there. And this is just from a rain. So what's going to happen when the green goes away?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Simon, I live on the golf course for the last forty years. But the point I want to make is that in 2018, the city voted for a go-bond, $60 million to develop, to improve and develop Parks and Rec. We're 25% of what we're required to have by the state of Florida. We've got, we need a lot more Parks and Rec. Why would we take a Parks and Rec parcel and consider changing it to multifamily? It doesn't make sense from that standpoint. That's all I wanted to say, that, that the people, thirty-four, thirty-seven thousand people voted for that $60 million go-bond. And, you know, we, we want to, we want to see more Parks and Rec, not lose some of our Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input?
Hi. Hi, Mom, hi, Dad. That's my mom and my dad, Barbara Manuel, my daughter, they have her for the day. I just wanted to read off a Cape Coral website. It's on your website. It says, "Regardless of a person's age, parks are one of the few places where it all comes together. A sense of community and appreciation of history and place respect for nature and good health. Cape Coral, Cape Coral's parks are where lifetime friendships are formed, where the gap between generations is bridged, and where people discover what they have in common. How do you grow a hometown with a sense of community while conserving green spaces and waterways for generations to come?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, just wanted to say, my name is Jacoby Kelso, I live on the sixth green. And I have a little brother right here, and we've grown up on the golf course for six years now.
Nine.
Nine. But, so yeah, there's an owl on the sixth green, and he's obsessed with it, he goes over there all the time, he, he loves it. And me and him, we always play catch on the football, with the football, on the golf course all the time. We'll play sports, and it's just, it's beautiful to see the sunset and everything. And I'm going to miss that if they end up building the condos. And it's just, the apartment, too.
Um, we've been there for nine years, and my husband and both my sons are avid golfers. Donna Kelso, the mom. And we absolutely love our backyard being the golf course. We purchased our home two years ago, we rented for the first seven, because of the beauty. And there's so much wildlife, our ducks, our squirrels, otters, the owl, the different birds that come. And my children all play outside, backyard, front yard basketball. We don't want to lose this, so please take that into consideration, and thank you so much for listening to us.
Thank you. I have another picture, I think. Adam, city clerk.
Thank you, my name is Terry Dudley. I live at 924 Southeast Fourth on the First Fairway. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but when the young man mentioned sunsets, I wanted to show the sunset that I look at. If this, if this is approved and goes through, I won't see that anymore, because there'll be a four-story building about sixty feet from my back door. I think that the planning staff made a very good approval of their information. Let me finish, I'll finish. It's not an approval, they voted to deny it, or presented to deny it, and I agree with that. I spent twenty-three years on the Planning Commission in Champaign, Illinois. That proposal that was brought forth would never have been approved in Champaign, and should not be approved here. And finally, we were all asked to wear green. My wife wasn't able to be here tonight, but she suggested that I wear this green shirt, because she thinks the proposal is a Mickey Mouse proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Scott Wolf. I live on Southeast Tenth Terrace, I lived there for about fifteen years. I'm a carpenter, I work in construction, I know quite a bit about the development. And one of the things I clearly see on this is with that number of cars, let, let alone taking a beautiful recreation park and turning it into a apartment complex in the middle of an established neighborhood, it seems blatantly absurd. But in a preview of what that will be like, I recall a couple occasions when there was a serious car accident or serious roadwork of some type on the Jason Nicholas or stuff, and cars were, were, um, what do you call it, diverted off through our neighborhood, where you have a steady flow of cars. I completely changed the neighborhood night and day. It, what we have is a very nice, quiet neighborhood, with very controllable, very, very understandable traffic. People see people and just automatically slow down. And it, it's a very safe environment. Without, with that much traffic added to it, there's no way it's going to be that way. That house is my basic lifetime investment. And it was invested in that solely because of the neighborhood. And I cannot possibly see losing a great amount of value from the neighborhood turning from a nice, quiet, low-traffic area to an expressway for hundreds of cars, and it is in the, on, on the outskirts of a major development with that many apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. And I'll open up for council for any discussion with citizens' input. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank all the residents that came out today. I want to thank you for, I don't know how many of you I saw on Monday at the church during the meeting, where we talked about how to approach council today. I'm glad you all decided to raise your hands, I'm glad you all came, and were very civil. We do appreciate that here on council. We've had a few meetings where people come in, and they're hooting and hollering, and, and their point doesn't get made as well as what you guys did today. So I want to thank you for coming out. I know you're looking for some sort of direction from council on this. I don't have a problem publicly stating it, that I will be against any sort of change on this zoning. I don't know what my other council members will say or do. They might want to review things like I have. I know a lot of them are up in Tallahassee advocating for our city. So I do want to thank you for your civility today, and coming out, and you know my opinion, I'm, I'm happy to publicly state it, and do what I can to advocate for your community. So, thank you. Also, Mike, there were a couple of comments about flooding in that area. I know with the Nicholas North project coming to an end, I believe that some of that flooding was addressed with drainage. Do you have any sort of update on that, that could? I know we're coming into the rainy season, so I know that that project is coming to a close as well, so I don't know if that...
There were significant drainage improvements made on the south side, along Nicholas. If Perses is back there, perhaps he can let us know when that project is closing out and everything open.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm hoping this rainy season, it does solve that issue, because I have gotten emails from you guys over the past couple, couple years, that I've been your representative. And I know it's a project that started, and I, I'll wait for Perses' update.
Thank you. Good evening, Perses Ambrano, Interior and Public Works Director. So we did upsize some pipes and a new connection to address the flooding issue in the area. We're working in another project, also to tie another pipe to the other side of the canal system. So we're trying to help the area, the area has a flooding issue.
Okay, thank you for the update. Like I said, I hope, I hope that resolves some of the flooding issues that you guys have had for the years, because I understand that it's always been bad back there, and, and I, I know, I know about it. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I also would like to thank everyone for coming out today. Thank you for all the emails. Thank you for all the emails that we have received. That way, we have a good understanding of what your position is. So I want to thank you for, for your emails and coming here today. As you all know, there's a process for this type of a zoning change. And if an applicant comes forward, they're entitled to that process. Eventually, you know, we can't maybe give you the decision that you're looking for today. I do know that the applicant withdrew from the Planning and Zoning Board. That was supposedly gonna have it heard by them, and then it would eventually came here to us. But I will tell you, on the face of it, I certainly do not support it. When you look at the location of the golf course, and where you have to literally go through a maze to get back to it. If you look at these projects throughout the city, a majority of these larger type of multifamily facilities were on a main thoroughfare, where this particular project, and that's the main reason that I wouldn't support it. It's just not a good fit for me at that particular location. So, there is a process that we must follow. This, this could come before our Planning and Zoning Board again in the future. It could surely come before us for an ultimate decision that we would have to make. But thank you for coming out today. And Samantha, we're, thank you Samantha for coming out today. We really appreciate you coming out. In addition to that, I know one gentleman had, I believe he was the first speaker, that had an issue with a particular house. What he was describing to me sounded like a code issue. So maybe if we could get staff to follow up with that particular individual to, to get more information and see, see what we can do for, for him or those residents in the area. One last thing, only because somebody had mentioned it tonight, about the Parks Go-Bond. As you well know, we asked our residents to go vote back in 2018, and back then, we identified it was going to be a $60 million endeavor. Here we are in 2023, the economic times that we find ourselves. We know that that $60 million obligation is going to be more than that. But I think our previous council, and this council, has made sure that we are going to fulfill our promise that we made. Because of the $60 million go bond, we had to outline the scope of work before you went to vote on it. So the reason that I mentioned that tonight is because of the one speaker, it's not like we can use any of that money to purchase the golf course, because that wasn't in the initial go bond. So I just want to make sure everybody is, is clear on that. So, but I think if you look, our city recognizes how important parks are, how important green spaces. If we didn't, we wouldn't have been bringing that referendum to you in 2018. So again, thank you for coming out. We'll see where the process takes us. But stay engaged, and we do hear you, so thank you. Any other council members? All right, thank you again. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item nine. Item nine is the consent agenda. I will now ask if any of the council wants to pull any items, or if we have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Why don't we wait two or three minutes before we move on? Let's let them go ahead and exit the chambers. I don't really want to take a recess, but we'll give it two or three minutes. Okay, I think we'll move on to item 9B, is appointments to boards and committee. B1, the first board is the Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Commission. There are one vacancy, and it looks like two applicants, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, there are two applicants that are interested in receiving a recommendation, Liza King and Richard Leon. Applicant King had a scheduled conflict and indicated she would be unable to attend this evening, but is very interested in serving. And Mr. Leon is here today. If you'd like to have me call him up to the podium for an interview.
Are we going to typically do the one minute like we have in the past for all of our boards? Okay.
All right. Richard Leon?
I'll take 15 seconds for you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council, Richard Leon. Thanks for having me here, and thanks for your consideration tonight. If you have any questions, I stand by for anything you have for me.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's all that are present today for this item.
Okay, so we have two applicants, Ms. King and Mr. Leon. So I guess we'll go down our voting order like we normally do.
Steinke.
King.
Welsh.
Leon.
Costin.
Leon.
Cummings.
Liza King.
Gunter.
King.
Hayden.
Leon.
Long.
King.
Shepherd.
Aye.
That's five for King and three for Leon.
Is there a motion for Mr. King? I'm sorry, Ms. King.
Yes, a motion together for Ms. King to be part of the MPO board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next board appointment is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I believe that we have six applicants and two vacancies, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, we have six applicants today. Eleanor Benda, Camille Burgos, Juan Gabriel Guerrero, Melissa McComas Lastra, Joel Shaw, and Anna Velasis. I would like to say, I'm not sure that everyone was able to check in today with the crowd, so I can call each name up for an interview if you'd like.
Sure.
I know they're all very interested in serving.
That'll be fun.
Eleanor Benda. Camille Burgos. Juan Gabriel Guerrero.
Yes, here. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Juan Guerra. I am a retired city manager in the state of Texas. I'm currently here in the city of Cape Coral as your city controller, with the privilege of working with Mr. Mark Mason. And the reason I'm here is because I have a lot of experience with the affordable housing side, but mainly in Texas, but a lot of experience with affordable housing, not part of a group, but direct experience. I'll give an example. In the city of LaFeria, Texas, we're at 34.9% poverty rate. As Finance Director, I worked in helping out those issues. In the city of Farr, Texas, where I spent 11 years, the poverty rate there was 28.3, where I had direct experience in developing a P3, private-public partnership, and getting a 288-unit low-to-moderate-income housing project, literally from the ground up, as well as working directly with an interlocal for the Farr Housing Authority to ensure that corruption and ethical operations are in the way. I'm currently friends with the executive director in the Housing Authority. We did a lot of great things there for the city of Farr. And any questions you have, I'm here.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Melissa McComas Lastra. Joel Shaw.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Joel Shaw. I'm new to the Cape Coral area, been here for about a year, just looking to get more involved in my local community. My profession, I'm a web and graphic designer. I worked fairly closely with an affordable housing nonprofit organization located up in upstate New York. Here down in Cape Coral, I actually contract with a local home builder, and just affordable housing is just very interesting to me, and I'd just like to be a more part of my community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Velasis. All right, thank you.
Okay, so that's our six applicants. We have two vacancies, so I guess we'll just go down the list and pick two individuals.
Right. And I'd just like to point out that there is a requirement that we have six of the 11 categories filled at all times. We exceed that threshold right now at seven.
Thank you.
Steinke.
Guerra and Shaw.
Welsh.
Guerra and Shaw.
Costin.
Guerra and Lastra.
Cummings.
Guerra and Shaw.
Gunter.
Guerrero and Shaw.
Hayden.
Guerra and Burgos.
Long.
Guerra and Shaw.
Shepherd.
Guerra and Shaw.
All right, so that is one for Burgos, eight for Guerra, one for Lastra, and six for Shaw.
So the top two vote-getters were right again, Madam City Clerk?
Guerra and Shaw.
Okay. Is there a motion for those two individuals?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next appointment is for the Charter School Governing Board. There are two vacancies, and it looks like nine applicants for two vacancies. Madam City Clerk?
Your Honor, as we began the meeting today, I learned that one of the applicants is not eligible.
Okay.
That would be Bobby Kendrick. So I've been asked to withdraw his application.
Okay. So we have eight applicants then.
All right. And then two applicants, Kelsey Gregware and Neil Saez, are very interested in serving, but they had scheduled conflicts today, so they will not be able to attend for the interview.
What was this, the second person, please?
Neil Saez. All right, so if you'd like, I can call up the remaining names for an interview at the podium.
Please.
Cara Bolan.
Hello, Council. My name is Cara Bolan. I am an eight-year resident here of Cape Coral. I am the mother of a third grader in the charter system. She goes to Oasis Elementary North, though she is quite sad that it's no longer Krista McAuliffe. She did actually really love that tie-in to the astronaut. My background is in, my degree is in anthropology, but my career has been in educational travel. So my clients have been teachers for the last 16 years. I help send students on trips that travel all around the world, so that is my interest in education. My reason for wanting to be on the board is just to have positive impact and change for my daughter's school. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? First name, Cara Bolan. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Edward Dross.
Good evening, Mayor Gunter and Councilmembers. I'm Dr. Edward F. Dross, M.D. I'm a 44-year resident of Cape Coral, and I practiced medicine during that time, retiring in 2021. Since I retired, I've taken a keen interest in school activities. I followed the Lee County School Board. I was active in the elections for the recent new members on the school board. I follow school board policy. I know most of the board members, and I know the superintendent. I followed legislative issues that the state has passed that affect the school district. And I would like to be a governing board member for this charter school system. I think I can offer, even though I have no hands-on experience, my expertise, I think citizen input to a charter school board is very important, and I would like to ask that you give me the opportunity to do this. I'm available for questions if you would like to offer them forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
What did you practice?
I had an office just across from the hospital here in Cape Coral. From 19, well, I was emergency medicine physician for two years, and then in 1981, I opened an office of internal medicine and family practice.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Benjamin Giddens.
Okay, thank you for taking the time today to meet with us. My name is Ben Giddens, or Benjamin. Been a resident of Cape Coral since 2014, which was the year that my daughter started at Krista McAuliffe, which is also now known as Oasis Elementary North. Next year, my son will be entering middle school at Oasis Middle. My daughter will be entering Oasis High, where she's entered the ACE program, within walking distance, just around the corner from our house, so proud dad. As a parent, I have a vested interest in seeing the best outcome for my children. They've been associated with the charter system for nine years. We have seven more years to go with the charter system. I'm basically looking to present the best possible outcome for the kids at that school, and ensuring that, you know, we can do the best we can for the students within the budget constraints, legislative, legislative constraints that we have to operate within. Community-wise, I'm a member of the Future Forestry Board, hi Dan, and actively involved in the community in terms of environmental causes, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Karen Michaels.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Karen Michaels. I am a resident of Cape Coral for the last two years. For 21 years before that, I was a resident of Kansas City, Missouri, and I served on a governing board for a charity that supported children that aged out of foster care. I have been missing being on a board. I had to resign when I moved. So I was looking for a board of directors, a governing board of directors position here in Cape Coral, and having the experience dealing with an organization that supported youth, I think I can bring a lot to the table. I am an attorney and a vice president at T-Mobile, and I support our business organization, so I have a very strong... so I have a very strong legal background and business acumen, and I think I can bring a financial perspective to the board. I have two children in the school district, an eighth grader and a sophomore, and I'm open for any questions that you may have. I'm also very involved in the community. My family supports the Cape Coral Animal Shelter. We volunteer there, and we also volunteer for the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife, taking care of the owls Samantha has left, but I was going to say hi to her.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. Are your children in the charter school system, or?
They're not. The waitlist was too long when we moved here. So my daughter is a sophomore at Cape Coral High School, and she's in the IB program. My son is an eighth grader at Gulf Middle, and he's on the waitlist currently for the Oasis School.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
How long have you been here for?
I moved here July of 2021, almost two years.
And where'd you move from?
Kansas City.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Joel Shaw.
Hello again. Thank you for your appointment to the Affordable Housing Committee. I appreciate that. Based on that, I'm actually gonna just withdraw my application for this board. Just, I have two jobs, I have two small kids, all about public service. I do need to be, you know, weary of my time and all that, so, but thank you very much again for your consideration. I really appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Kathy Stout.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. How are you tonight? I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, and I just wanted to say that I did have something to tell you this evening as well. The last few weeks, I, my son goes to the charter school. He's in seventh grade, and recently I not only joined the PTO, but we also did a major dance, and I just want to quote something that was said. "The Shamrock Roll Dance was the first school-wide dance in years, and it was a huge success. Thanks to all the parents who donated snacks, chaperone, a special thanks to Kathy Stout, a parent who stepped up to lead this effort." That is actually on their social media, and the reason I stepped up is because they asked me if there was something I could bring to the table, and for the middle school students, we had a middle school dance, sold out tickets for $2.50, and the kids loved it, and we did this in two and a half weeks, so I wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, that, those are all the names I have, and I just would like to point out again, the name Kendrick and Shaw have withdrawn their applications.
Okay. All righty then, I guess we will go down the list. We have two vacancies, so I guess we'll pick two individuals. Oh, I'm sorry.
I noticed one of the applicants is seeking reappointment. Do you know when he was initially appointed, Kimberly?
One moment.
It was down on the board sheet.
Okay.
September 22nd, 2021.
Thank you.
Steinke.
Giddens and Stout.
Giddens and Stout. Welsh.
Drass and Saez.
Drass and Saez. Costin?
Michaels and Saez.
Cummings?
This is tough, because we have a lot of good applicants that came through, so Kathy Stout and... I'm gonna go with the doctor.
Drass.
Edward Lass.
Drass and Stout. Gunter?
Drass and Michaels.
Hayden?
Michaels and Bolan.
Michaels and Bolan. Long?
Michaels and Stout.
And Stout. Shepherd?
Michaels and Stout.
Michaels and Stout. One moment. All right, I show one for Bolan, three for Drass, one for Giddens, five for Michaels, two for Saez, and four for Stout.
It looks like the two top vote-getters would be Michaels and Stout.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion for that, to approve those two individuals?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? See none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9C is unfinished business. C1 is follow-up items for council. I don't have anything listed. Council have any follow-up items? See none. 9D is new business. We do not have any listed. 9E is personnel actions, none listed as well. No petitions to council, so we will move on to item 9G, follow-up items from city management. G1 is Hurricane Ian recovery update. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Council Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director. I've got a few updates for you tonight on a few different topics, but we'll be brief and start with Solid Waste here.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Mayor Gunter, Council, just a real brief update. You probably saw it on the news already. We started the cart delivery out to the residents yesterday, and we expect to take about, up to three weeks, depending on how it goes, so they're getting out there, and there'll probably be, you know, hiccups along the way, things happen, and we'll work through them, so if anybody says any concerns when their cart gets delivered, or they thought they were on the list, we'll figure it out, so. Any, with that being said, any questions?
Councilmember Welsh.
Yes, so being that we purchased the carts, we have a list. We're not just turning them over to Waste Pro to distribute. We're personally distributing them to the residents.
That is correct, so the list that Waste Pro provided us, and then the request came in through 311, we combined that list, sent it to the Tota Corporation, and then we have what's called the A&amp;D, Assembly and Delivery Company, that's delivering it on our behalf, and then we're gonna get the list as they're delivered, so that we cross-reference it to the requests that came in, and make sure that those folks get their carts.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't just turning them over to Waste Pro and letting them deliver as they see fit, because I know there's a long list for people waiting for carts, and I want to make sure our residents are the ones that are getting them first, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have a question. I don't know if this is for you or Mr. City Manager. I know I had brought this item up before, starting to see more individuals putting bulk trash out at the street like we were normally when we had the debris contractors here picking up the hurricane debris. I think we had a discussion with Code, will they be out notifying those residents, or how are we going to, you know, address that issue moving forward? Seems the last week or so, I'm starting to see more of it, more of it.
Yes, I had a meeting with Code last week about addressing major corridors and identifying the top 10 items that Code addresses. They've developed a pamphlet that is actually gonna be a trifold, and we're gonna begin getting that message out to everybody, specifically related to just the hurricane items. I've discussed with Public Works as they're driving around if they see root balls, or they see anything that is related to the hurricane, like, let's say there's a pile in a vacant field, to just provide that service to the city to try and get it back to normal.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Princess Ambra, Interim Public Works Director. I have a brief update on the traffic signal situation. Lee County contacted us. The, part of the big issue with the backups, even though all traffic signals are functional, having at least one head per direction, is that the detection system were damaged, so the optimization of the timing is not there. So Lee County has been working with Federal Highway to get a guarantee of their reimbursement, but on Monday, the county commissioners approved for the county to go ahead and pursue the detection system, which it might or might not be reimbursed by FEMA. The reason being that sometimes it's just a portion of the component that was damaged by the hurricane, but for many reasons, the whole system has to be replaced. So, how that affects the Cape, the county told us there are 12 traffic signals with the detection system that will be part of this program, and the amount is in the tune of $300,000. So we're working with finance. We're looking into the agreement that we have with Lee County for maintenance of the traffic signals that are city-owned, and we will keep you informed. This just happened this week. At the CTIC, we will have a more detailed update, but just to let you know that the county is working in trying to accelerate the optimization of our traffic signal timing. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Welsh, come in.
So I was gonna wait for the CTAC meeting for this, but maybe getting it to you ahead of time might help. I was driving down to Naples a while ago, and I noticed all of their traffic signals are turned horizontal as compared to vertical. I don't know if there was a study done on how many of those were damaged as compared to ours being vertical, or, and if maybe that's something that we could bring up in an NPO meeting, but it just, it was, it came to my head, and I wanted to say it now, and bring it up as maybe a CTAC item, so.
Good observation.
If we're gonna be fixing all these lights, it might be the time to change them, because if, for some reason, the wind affects it differently for the future, so, just a quick thought I wanted to get, get out before I forgot about it, so thank you.
Good.
Councilmembers Steinke.
Thank you. Will we have that contract evaluation done by our council next week on who's responsible for maintenance and repair on those?
The, we have an agreement with Lee County, and we are responsible, they are responsible for the maintenance. We pay them, and there is a fee structure that we pay them by, we have all the different requirements in the agreement, so we're looking at the agreement to see how this expenditure fits within the agreement, and we will have to bring that to council for approval.
And is FEMA reimbursement totally out at this point, or is it still?
It's uncertain. It's uncertain.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, just to follow up on that discussion, so this is actually FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, not FEMA, for clarification, and then what we're researching in the contract is whether or not there's an ability for administration to just approve this as part of the contract that we already have. So we're just trying to determine whether or not we need to bring this action back before the council, or if we already have discretion under that contract that was previously approved to move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Mason, good evening.
Sorry, FEMA will not reimburse for those cameras specific to this, because it's federal highway responsibility, and those two agencies don't mix when it comes to funding these sorts of things in following a disaster. There are very specific guidelines about who's responsible for what.
Just a few other general topics to touch on here. Obviously, we're still very much engaged in recovery activities. As was mentioned, we're very anxious to get a lot of things recovered in our city. We're still waiting on a lot of FEMA inspectors to come out, and I know the mayor was working with Congressman Donalds on trying to advocate with FEMA to get some of those folks here, or provide an alternate pathway, perhaps, to, for us to maybe document a lot of those things, so we can begin these repairs in our community. In addition, as the mayor sits on the Resilient Lee Task Force, we've got a member on each of those eight branches where we've met, and we're beginning to coordinate good plans, so as we come out, that we make sure that Cape Coral is well-represented and well-coordinated, because my past experience has been that those that are the most prepared and organized generally end up with the best results and the most dollars when things are potentially available there. So we're continuing to work and coordinate there. Right now, this is, a lot of the technical parts, as the dollars begin to roll in, that we need to make sure we're squared away as we begin this years-long process of some of this grant funding. Additionally, I know, working with the mayor, that a Resilient Lee Town Hall is gonna be planned here in the city, and we're just narrowing down dates before we advertise that. It's important, out of that committee, and I'm sure the mayor can elaborate, that that group hears from each of our communities across Lee County to go back and represent to that group. Reflect that.
Yeah, it's just a town hall meeting to see, you know, give the community the opportunity for input, what they feel that we need as a city, so the task force will be going around to all the cities here in Lee County and having these town hall meetings. Like Chief Lamb said, we're in the process, there's a couple dates, I believe. We're trying to finalize those dates. Once they're finalized, then we will get that information out to the community.
Sorry, thank you.
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I, I'll only believe it if I hear it from you. I was in a meeting last week, and I actually heard that FEMA eyes have seen the yacht club. Have they?
Mark come back up and elaborate on that.
Yes, sir. We've actually, FEMA has been out and has inspected the yacht club buildings, all of them. They're going to be going back out, doing the beaches, they're gonna go back out and do the piers, the docks, and the seawalls at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you. They also did the Southwest Water Reclamation Plant, too, so. And we're now scheduling the remainder of them. I think I sent you all an email telling you on Friday that FEMA has awarded, or we've been told that we have two dedicated inspectors for the city of Cape Coral. It still takes a lot of time to do the inspections, but we do have two dedicated inspectors, as well as others as necessary, for those facilities that require a different degree of inspection, such as our water plants and our wastewater treatment plants.
Great, that's great news. Thank you.
Mr. Mason, for you, walk away. Did they give you a timeline on those two dedicated FEMA inspectors, when they'll be here?
Right now, I think we're looking at starting them up around April 24th.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions from council? All right, let's move on to item G3 as the state legislative update. I'm sorry, permitting. I skipped one. I just wanted to see a sidestep there.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew Granbo, Special Projects Coordinator. A few general updates on our current initiatives for permitting in the EnerGov system. A couple big things happening this week. We're doing some final testing of four approved task cleanup scripts. All right, now the PowerPoint's up on the screen. So these scripts are going to help us clean up all those open tasks that are creating some performance slowdowns in the EnerGov system. It's been our main challenge with addressing some of the slow performance that several of our staff members have been experiencing over the last couple months. The scripts that have been approved by Tyler are gonna reduce our open tasks from over 15,000 to just under 10,000, so about a 39% decrease in those open tasks, and we're really optimistic that this is gonna help improve the system's performance starting by next week. So in the final stages of testing that this week, we'll have the go-ahead by Friday, and then those will run over the weekend. Other initiatives that we're working on, we'll be rolling out two mobile apps that do both building inspections and code enforcement through the EnerGov system. do both building inspections and code enforcement through the EnerGov system. They're called IG Inspect and IG Enforce. And so we're running a pilot program with a couple of building inspectors and a couple of code enforcement officers with this application that links in directly with EnerGov. It's going to allow us to have a little bit more rapid and efficient operations in the field. Our staff will be able to use iPads that do not need to be connected to the internet, they don't need to have an active cell signal, and they're able to download all their cases, and no matter where they are in the city, they can complete all of their work. And then when they're on Wi-Fi, it automatically syncs to our servers and has up-to-date information on our EnerGov servers. So this is really exciting to be rolling out this. We've been doing a couple of meetings with key staff of both of those divisions, and we should be rolling them out in the next couple of weeks. And then finally, for our current initiatives, still working very diligently on our comprehensive permit workflow restructuring process. The first phase that we're in right now is the licensing changes, which I'll speak about a little bit in a little bit more detail on the next couple of slides. The transition to our new revised team structure, which will also help us with some of the performance improvements that we're aiming to achieve. And then one other note, Mark Folks, the city's consultant from Tenzinga Consultants, as we've been making really good progress with our comprehensive permit workflow restructuring, he'll be transitioning into some code enforcement projects. So that's a really good sign that we're making really good progress with EnerGov and all of the reconfigurations that we need to achieve. So tonight, I'd like to talk in a little bit more detail on some of our upcoming license and certification changes. As councils are aware, there's really two pieces of law that we're hoping to comply with. First was State House Bill 735, which will be fully effective on July 1st of this year. This supersedes a lot of the local government licensing ability, in particular for specialty contractor licensing. It prohibits local governments from imposing any type of license requirement for a person whose job does not substantially correspond with an existing DBPR license for specialty contractor work. And the city council, back in January, passed ordinance 1023, which ensures that we're consistent with the state requirements in House Bill 735. So what this means for us as staff is we're having to make a lot of changes to the EnerGov system. We're configuring EnerGov through 92 different permit types in the system to ensure that the revised requirements are matched in the system itself. So we'll be implementing these changes over three phases. Phase one is for any type of permit or work that we are preempted by the state to require a licensing checks for. So that is currently in progress, and those restrictions on applying for permits of certain types have been phased into the EnerGov system over the last couple of weeks, and will be completed with all of those relatively soon. Phase two is for permits that we had checked, both local Cape Coral licenses as well as state licenses during the application submission portion of the process through EnerGov CSS. Those are currently in development, we're hoping to have all of those completed by May 19th of 2023. Both Phase one and Phase two changes are not gonna affect our contractors who are already registered in the system. The system will simply not be checking the local license, they'll be checking the state license. That's already configured and is relatively straightforward, so contractors will experience no major change during the Phase one and Phase two changes. Phase three is where some contractors will start experiencing the need to do an action with the system, either through EnerGov CSS or through working with our team here at City Hall. None of the changes affect permit reviews or inspections, it's only the license check during the application process. So again, none of the permit reviews or the inspections are going to change due to these changes that are required by state law. So for the new verification process that the city will be conducting through EnerGov CSS, it'll look something like this. They'll create an EnerGov CSS account, which most of our contractors already have one of those, they've been applying, at least since March 20th, solely through the EnerGov system. They'll do a one-time registration of their state professional license with the city. So instead of applying for a license, they'll be registering their state license number with the city. And then they'll be able to apply for any type of license restricted permit, as long as their state license is active. So what the EnerGov system will do is, any license number that is registered with the city and is active with the state, the system will actually check that every time a permit is applied for automatically. So it'll ensure that the license is active, and if it's not active, it won't allow that permit application to be submitted. So any contractor with a state license or certification on their record with us now only needs to verify that it's active with DBPR, so very, very basic, just logging onto EnerGov CSS and checking to make sure all their information is up to date. For contractors that perform a trade that no longer requires a license, all they have to do is have an EnerGov CSS account, just an email and a password to log on there to apply for the permits that we are not allowed to check licenses on per the state. However, the contractors who currently hold a specialty license, and so you can see the chart on the right side of the screen, there's a list of all of our specialty licenses that we are phasing out. The left is what the city had been issuing in terms of specialty licenses, and on the right is what the change will be to per the state law, as well as the city council's ordinance that was passed in January. So there's a few contractors that have no state license, and they've been relying on our local municipal license to pull permits with us. So it's approximately 200 contractors, we've ran a report and know exactly who all of these contractors are, and so we've been really doing a major communications effort, reaching out to them, letting them know that this change is upcoming, it needs to be in place by July 1st. However, we do have the ability to consider some grandfathering program to prevent any hardship, buy them some additional time to pursue a required state license as they've been operating under our municipal license. We don't want to prevent any hardship or cause any business owners to not be able to do work in the city. So that is something that we are working on. We're working with Tyler Technologies to look at all the possibilities of the EnerGov system and having this type of workaround, particularly as the system will be automatically checking the state database for active contractor registrations. So all these changes will be completed by the end of June, but we're making good progress, and once this major phase in our overall permit workflow restructuring is completed, we'll be able to move on, spend a little bit more time doing some of our team breakouts and other performance improving initiatives that we're doing with EnerGov. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. Matt, I know that CCCIA and BIA have been in your Monday EnerGov meetings along the way. Is this type of information been delivered there where they're fully aware of what's gonna have to happen?
Yes, as well as through the CCCI and Lee BIA, I have a weekly meeting with Phil Ford and Lynn from the CCCIA. They're aware of the changes, it's something that's happening statewide, a lot of municipalities, pretty much any county or municipal permit issuing agency that is responsible for specialty contractor licensing is having to deal with this. So it's a very well-known transition that's coming through the pipeline, and so they're aware of the changes. We've also submitted a press release, it's on our licensing page of our website, and as we've been able to identify all of our specialty contractors that do not have a state license currently registered with us, we can actually reach out to them individually and let them know, hey, you've been pulling permits under the specialty license, there's this transition due to changes in state law, and you need to address it, and we also will be communicating any grandfathering potential to those particular contractors.
Okay, fabulous, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt, for the update.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item, G3, is state legislative update.
I guess that's my opportunity to hop in here. Excuse me. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This is Nick Matthews at the Becker Firm, and I apologize, I'm a little hoarse, it's been a very active week up here in Tallahassee, as many of you on the council know. I want to start by thanking Mayor Gunter and Councilmember Steinkie, Shepard, Hayden Long, Cosden and Cummings for making the trek up here to advocate on behalf of the city. I think we had really quality meetings. It is good for our delegation members and other decision-makers to see that city leadership has skin in the game, they're willing to make the trip up there and to advocate on behalf of our issues and our appropriation items. And I think the trip was really worthwhile, it was also a lot going on with the League of Cities and Southwest Florida days up here, but we made the most of it. I think the highest, you know, very quickly, I know you've got a busy agenda, the highest level kind of importance is, all of our appropriation items are in good standing, they are alive and eligible, we've made every deadline, we are in play as the legislature will go into budget conference. We were told presumably towards the end of next week, and that's when the real sausage starts being made with respect to the budget. But as of right now, all six of our projects are eligible, and that's the Northeast Reservoir Transmission Main and Pump, the historic Kaluza Hachi Shoreline Project, the Septic Sewer Project, the Storm Athletic Field Complex Redevelopment Project, the EOC, and then the Fire Station 10 Replacement. All those are alive and well, and we will continue to advocate for their full funding through the process. You know, we focus heavily on appropriations, but I want to assure the council and folks in the city, you know, the city staff, that we keep our eye on some of the high-profile controversial legislation, like the, you know, the Comprehensive Plans Bill, the, some of the residential permitting bills, the vacation rental bills, the land use bills, solid waste management, you name it, we are keeping an eye on those, we're advocating, we're working on amendments, we're working with the League of Cities on fighting some of those really bad bills. But look, I look forward to reporting back in the next week or two on where the next level of kind of budget updates are. It is good to know that the Storm Athletic Complex Redevelopment Project, that one should be done the moment conference begins, because the House and Senate agreed on the same funding level already. So that's kind of nice to walk into budget conference with one project that will already, what we call, close out between the chambers and be kind of settled. So that's really, really encouraging. That's all I got. Again, I want to thank the council for making the trip to Tallahassee and working the halls with us, and I'm happy everyone made it back safe and sound, it looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Nick? Appreciate everything the last couple of days, Nick, and setting up our meetings. We know that you're an important part of the process, and we appreciate everything that you and your firm does for us. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 10 as ordinances and resolutions. 10A is public hearings. First item is Resolution 74-23. I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk. He's read the title.
Resolution 74-23, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Bay Point Canal right-of-way and Bay Shore Canal right-of-way located adjacent to lots 21 and 22, block 159, Cape Coral, Unit 4, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 21 and 22, block 159, Cape Coral, Unit 4, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for easements underlying a previously vacated portion of Bay Point Court right-of-way, property located at 5346 Bay Point Court, providing for an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. For the record, Candace Ford, an associate planner here with the City Planning Division. I'm going to be presenting Vacation 22-000029, Resolution 74-23. The applicant is gonna be CT Lending Solutions, LP. As previously mentioned, the location is gonna be 5346 Bay Point Court. The applicant is currently requesting to vacate canal right-of-way, which equates to 907.56 square feet in total, which is gonna be adjacent to lots 21 and 22. They're also requesting to vacate the platted easements along lots 21 and 22, along the water frontage, that's gonna equivalent to 1,281 square feet in total. They are also requesting to vacate platted easements along the north part of the site in lots 21 and 22, that will equal 383.99 square feet in total. And they are also requesting to vacate easements underlying part of Bay Point Court, the right-of-way that was vacated by Resolution 07-00, and that's gonna equivalent to 1,098.87 square feet. The location is gonna be up on the screen for you there. The zoning is currently R1, as is everything within the 500-foot radius and adjacent to that as well. The site is currently 12,777 square feet in total. It is currently an undeveloped lot, they did pull a demo permit for the house that was on-site in 2017. They do have existing marine improvements that do include a seawall currently at this time, and the site is at the intersection of two saltwater canals, which is gonna be your Bay Shore Canal and your Bay Point Canal. The vacation requests are gonna be illustrated on the screen for you. The one on the left is going to be for Exhibit A, and that's gonna show you the 907.56 square feet of canal right-of-way they're proposing to vacate. On the right, it is going to be the easements associated with that, and that's gonna equivalent to the 1,281 square feet of easements. The second request is going to be for the easements along the road frontage, and on the left, it's going to be for the 383.99 square feet of platted easements adjacent to Bay Point Court. And then on the right, it's going to be for the utility easements and underlying drainage easements that they're requesting to vacate, and that's gonna be the total for 1,098.87 square feet. It does meet the criteria listed in the LDC per Section 3.4.5. B. Just to summarize, the canal right-of-way is gonna be small, and it's not really of value for navigation or anything like that. Same thing with the right-of-way along the street for Bay Point Court, it's not used for navigability at this point, we don't have thorough traffic going through there or anything like that, so it's not gonna really have any future benefit. And the utility providers did provide letters of no objection, they did request, of course, that we do have the six-foot easement around the property, which the applicant is proposing to keep as well. And the hearing examiner did recommend approval with conditions, which are noted in the staff report, and prior to hex, I only received two phone calls, and they were merely asking about what exactly the vacation was for. They didn't have a support or an against decision, and I haven't received anything in between hex and council this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Oh, now, public hearing, is anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 74-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 74-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got two motions in two seconds? Any other discussion?
This one's good to go.
Yeah, all right. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Eight Eyes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 14-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 14-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Comprehensive Plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to mixed-use land use for property described as lots 5 through 20, block 2175, Cape Coral subdivision, Unit 32, property located at 809 through 907 Kismet Parkway East, providing severability and an effective date.
Chad?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Planning Division. This is Ordinance 14-23, it's a privately initiated future land use map amendment. The applicant for this is Gulf Coast Closets LLC. It's eight properties that are located along Kismet Parkway that are just south of the Andalucia Industrial Park. There are utilities available to this site, and they're looking for a future land use map amendment from commercial professional to mixed use. Just really quickly, surrounding area, it's industrial park to the north, to the south you have, I believe it's a Dollar General and a gas station at two corners of Andalucia Boulevard. You have some single-family homes that are located to the south, but those are actually, have commercial zoning and land use on them. Existing land use to the north is industrial, east-west is commercial professional, and then south across Kismet is also commercial professional. They're looking to take these eight properties to mixed use, feature land use, and we'll kind of go into, in a minute, we'll go into why they're asking for that designation rather than what they have, which is currently commercial. They're undeveloped, they're, all of them are, right now, they're not combined, they're just, all of them are a little over 10,000 square feet in size. It's had the commercial professional feature land use since 2010 and the commercial zoning since 2011. We mentioned it has utilities available to the site. The applicant already has a rezone on this property for the industrial zoning, so they're looking to take these properties so that they can build a cabinet or closet manufacturing use on this property. They had actually applied for the rezone prior to the land use map amendment, but we discovered in the course of reviewing their rezone application that there was actually a slight mapping error, where they thought they originally had mixed-use land use, that was actually erroneously sort of extended by city staff to these properties. We found that out, the applicant, and then decided to initiate their own feature land use map amendment to the mixed-use district from the commercial professional district. So the existing land use allows for a maximum FAR of 1.0, you're looking at a little over 90,000 square feet of commercial. If it was developed to that maximum intensity, there is no residential allowed within the CP land use. With the mixed use, it has a- CP land use. With the mixed use, it has a FAR of 1.0, same maximum square footage allowed there. Mixed use, because it allows for residential or commercial uses, would allow for, would allow for multifamily there if it was rezoned to something along those lines in the future. We mentioned earlier, they already have a rezone application in the door for the industrial land use. If this was developed with its max density within the mixed use, you'd be looking at 53 units. However, if they are standalone residential uses pursuant to, you know, rezone ever being approved by city council, you'd be, only be looking at seven units standalone because you're limited to 20% multifamily development within mixed use if it's not part of a mixed use development. The mixed use allows for a variety of zoning districts, including residential, industrial, commercial, all those sorts of things. We found that the site is at a commercial node. It's just a little bit east of the intersection of Andalusia Boulevard and Kismet Parkway. It's an extension of that commercial node at that intersection. We looked at whether it's appropriate for the mixed use designation. Staff finds that it's well-suited for commercial, industrial, or mixed use development. It has, it's at a commercial node. It has frontage on a four-lane arterial roadway, so it has access and visibility. It meets several of the commercial siting guidelines within our comprehensive plan. The non-residential land use extends in all four directions, whether it's industrial land use or commercial professional land use, and staff finds that the site would not be suitable for standalone residential development based upon its, its access, location, and things of that nature. Staff recommends approval of the request to the mixed use feature land use designation. The planning zoning commission also recommends approval of, of the change, and we have received one letter or email of opposition to the case. They were citing some traffic conditions that were present along Kismet Parkway at certain hours of the day. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 14-23? Please come forward.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is James Moore, for the record, and I represent Gulf Coast Closets. And just to put a little context into it, Gulf Coast Closets is under contract to acquire those eight parcels, and as part of the contingency in the contract is to get, get this done. Ultimately, rezone, but this, again, as staff adequately discussed and talked about, this, this future land use map amendment needed to come first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 14-23?
So moved.
Second. Is there any further council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 30-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 30-23, an ordinance of the City of Cape Coral relating to a moratorium on the acceptance of applications for and the issuance of permits for development of self-storage facilities within all zoning districts in the City of Cape Coral, providing for exemptions, providing for the duration of the moratorium and method of processing applications and permits during, after, or prior to the effective date of the moratorium, providing a procedure to determine vested rights, appeals, and modification to vested development, providing for exhaustion of administrative remedies, providing for severability and an effective date. The second and final public hearing will be April 19th, 2023.
Good evening, Mr. Struvi.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, Mike Struvi, planning team coordinator with the Planning Division. My credentials are in file with the City Clerk's office. Ordinance 30-23 would establish a moratorium in all zoning districts in the city on self-service storage facilities for a period of nine months. This is the first of two public hearings on this matter, so the earliest that you could adopt this ordinance would be at the conclusion of your second public hearing, which is scheduled for April 19th. Moratoriums simply allow local governments to put a hold on the processing of new applications for a use, in this case, self-service storage facilities, while new regulations are being drafted and considered. Amending regulations or developing new regulations involves new rules, and that generally occurs, involves multiple steps, and that does take time. Hence the reason for the nine-month moratorium. These steps frequently involve policy direction by the city council, research based on that direction, and then rulemaking. Publicly noticed hearings would be required before changes to the land development code could be adopted. And in the case when we adopt, or when we amend our land development code, that would first require us to go to planning and zoning, and then before you for advertised public hearings. A moratorium does provide breathing space to allow consideration and adoption of new regulations before new applications for a particular use could then continue to be applied to for the city, and likewise then to be processed and potentially approved by staff. Staff is bringing this ordinance forward to address a pretty dramatic increase in the last couple of years of self-service storage facilities. Many of these storage facilities are, are being located along some of our major streets in the city, arterials and collector streets. And a number of those are also being located along commercial nodes or key intersections. And these are sites that have very high visibility. And for a city like Cape Coral that has limited commercial lands, that visibility is very limited, and has some pretty serious land use implications in that if those storage uses are occupying those highly visible sites, they may be doing so at the detriment of other uses that are likewise allowed in the same zoning districts. But unlike, storage facilities do require generally higher visibility to be successful. We've estimated that there are approximately 1.5 million square feet of existing self-storage uses in the city, and in addition to that, there is approximately an additional 1.6 million square feet of storage uses that are either under construction or in the permitting process. The national industry standard for self-service storage facilities is roughly around five to 10 square feet per capita or per person. So if you were to extrapolate that out to our city's population of roughly 200,000, we're a little over that now, that would equate to somewhere in the neighborhood of 1 million to a little over 2 million square feet of self-storage uses that would be needed at this time to service our population. Again, those are based on national figures and not on, for example, a study or research that would be unique to our particular market. That being said, those industry standards may or may not be a little bit low for our area and for, in one reason, because we're in a very high growth rate. We're growing very rapidly. In addition, in Florida, unlike some other areas of the country, we lack basements. And even though some houses have addicts, they really don't lend themselves for the storing of materials very well, like some other areas of the country might. There are other communities across the country, as well as in Florida, that have been adopting moratoriums to sort of hit a pause on new application and to determine whether or not additional or new regulations are needed. We've got several local governments here listed on this slide that have recently amended their land development code. The City of Lauder, Lauder Hill prohibits self-storage facilities within two miles of another such facility in the commercial zoning district. This council recently adopted an ordinance that prohibits self, self-served storage facilities from being located within one mile of each other. And then Pompano Beach, following the adoption of a moratorium, did adopt or amend their land use and development regulations that included operational and new architectural requirements. Pasco County likewise enacted a moratorium, and during that process also amended their land development code to include minimum lot sizes, minimum setbacks, and new architectural requirements. This particular ordinance does establish a nine-month moratorium, which, if adopted, would continue on to January 19th of 2024. During this time, the city would be actively researching at the direction of, of council, since this is largely a policy-related issue, to see what steps staff might need to take to amend our regulations and bring those regulations forward for year review and then schedule those for public hearing. Some of the key components of this particular ordinance, it establishes an area that's subject to the moratorium. It establishes exemptions. It establishes the length of the moratorium, and it establishes a vested rights process or procedure. As I mentioned earlier, this is the first of two public hearings. The second's scheduled for April 19th. Assuming that this moratorium is adopted, we envision that we would be meeting with council fairly soon after the moratorium went into effect, perhaps at a committee of the whole meeting, to get direction from council on what types of issues they would want us to research with an eye towards amending our land development code. And again, that, that would give staff time to develop those regulations, discuss those with, with council, and then schedule those required public hearings, all with the idea of having those new regulations in place prior to January 19th of next year. We have, I myself personally have talked to five different individuals about this ordinance and have talked to those individuals either in person or over the phone, in some cases, multiple times. The one common concern that I have heard from those individuals is the fact, or centers around the vested rights determination, the fact that that would require a couple, a public hearing before the city council to allow one of their projects that is in the pipeline now to be approved. And the concern is that the outcomes of, of public hearings can be uncertain. So there's that anxiety associated with not knowing if that vested rights determination would be approved or not. I'm available in case you have questions later after public comment.
Thank you, sir. I'll now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 30-23? Please come forward. We use the podium here, sir, to my left. Podium, the other podium, sir, over here. Sir, this podium over here, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mike. My name is Scott Moore. I'm the owner of 2036 De Navara Parkway. I bought this property in January with the intent to build a self-storage facility. It's zoned for self-storage. I've spoken several times with Mike. I appreciate Mike taking the time. And I sent rather long emails to, to Kimberly Brunns, and I hope that that reached your desk, just basically outlining my timeline and the money that we've spent on this project up to date. So just, just to recap, we bought this property for roughly 870,000 in January, immediately went under contract with a construction company, gave them a $1 million deposit, and we've been proceeding through the process of securing a permit. We had submitted our intention to build a self-storage facility on March 7th and scheduled for our pre-application meeting on March 28th. In that meeting, Patrick White informed us that we would not be grandfathered into this moratorium if it were indeed passed on April 19th. And then he proceeded to tell us, I'm sure he's the messenger, but proceeded to tell us that if it were passed on April 19th, it would become effective retroactively from March 15th, which just doesn't seem fair with the amount of money that we've, we've spent, the time, the manpower. So I respectfully ask that the council consider developers like myself that have spent this much time, this much effort, and an incredible amount of money. We're not a re, this is our hard-earned money that we've saved, and we love, we love the location. There is a substantial demand for storage in our area. And one of the points that I've made to, to anyone that will listen is that just because there's overbuilding in one area of Cape Coral, and that sounds like what it is, doesn't mean that there's not a demand for storage in other areas. So in our area, our four-mile radius, competitive radius, there's 137,000 square feet of additional demand that's needed. Our facility's a little bit under 100,000. It's, it's not on a major thorough way. It's, it's on De Navara Parkway across from a high school. It's only going to be one-story and already has extensive requirements that include an eight-foot wall around the perimeter, extensive landscaping that includes 87 trees, bushes along the ground that have to be a minimum of 32 inches high. We expect those to grow, you know, quickly. So, all the things that I did in preparation spanned back for a year for this project. And for us to be told, you know, a month before we would actually hopefully secure our permit, that we would have to wait, maybe have to wait nine months, just doesn't seem fair. And, and I laid that out in a long email. So I hope, I hope that reached your desk. I'm happy to resend it to you. I'm asking that the council please consider the impact of this moratorium on people that are so far into the process. What that would do to us financially would be, it would be something we really couldn't bear. So, I'm asking you as a council, if you want to pass a moratorium, it's in your right. I understand that. I know you're trying to do what's right for the city. But, take into account those, those people that have spent this much money, that believe in this, believe in this, this town and want to be a part of it. What that would do to us just doesn't seem fair. And so what I'm asking is, if you pass the moratorium, please don't make it retroactively effective from March 15th. Allow those that have submitted their, their site plans to the town, which we did yesterday, to proceed as if there's no moratorium. I just feel like, you know, what we've been doing is working a year towards this project, obviously a substantial amount of money. And it sounds to me like this moratorium's only been discussed for three weeks. And I just feel like that's a little bit overkill to pass a moratorium in, in basically a month. And I would, I just, I ask for you to really think about what that would do to an investor like myself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Jerry Miller. For the record, I'm here talking about the moratorium. I'm partners with a Dr. Subash Crepatal, otherwise known as Dr. Powell, and we, he's owned the property about, I think, over 10 years. So, I also want to thank staff. They've been very communicative and informative regarding concerns on the moratorium and how it affects our project. And we were advised that since our site plan was submitted and deemed complete, it's currently under review, before March 15th, that the moratorium would not apply to us. And there would be language on this ordinance that we, that would address this. And also, we would not be required to apply for a vested rights hearing. This is what staff- This was staff's opinion. I didn't, reading the ordinance, I just didn't see that clear language. I was advised that under C2, on the part where it talks about pending ordinance, pending on March 15 is the language that would address that our project can move forward, not only with our site plan, but subsequently with our building plan, which we have not submitted yet. Our building plans are at about 90%, maybe 85%. And we're planning to submit those probably at the end of the month, but past the April 19. So that's the main thing. And I just didn't glean that from the C2 part about the pending ordinance. And it's possible I'm not reading that right, that my grandfather has seen, again, not only with the site plan, but the subsequent building plan, which we're, you know, as the other gentleman mentioned, we've made quite expenditures on that. And staff's been also great with their reviews, comments regarding landscaping, and all the things required, you know, for this building. There was also something in ordinance about, under D1, permit issuance talks about the due process and applications received before March 15 can proceed and shall be processed in good faith. And I think that's fine for our site plan, but we can't just, can't assume that includes our upcoming building permit. We haven't even applied for the, submitted those plans. So that was a little confusing. So basically, you know, don't even know, should we rush our plans, which I don't want to do to get them in under April 19? So I just want some clarity on where we stand. And, you know, I appreciate it if this, the address is, it's in Diplomat Parkway. And I think it's, you know, yes, it's a need, and I understand what you're, what you're trying to accomplish, and I'm all for that. So if we could get some clarity on that particular point, on, are we grandfathered in, are we not?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. As it was mentioned earlier, the final public hearing will be held on April 19, 2023. And some of the questions that was asked during public hearing, I guess I can get with staff and try to get some clarity moving forward before the final public hearing, which will be on April 19, 2023. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 25-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 25-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 7, Purchase and Sale of Real and Personal Property, Sections 2-140, 2-141, 2-142, 2-143, 2-144, 2-145, 2-146, 2-148, 2-149, 2-150, and 2-151, Regarding the Procurement Process, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Thank you. Turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have my voice back, so I get to talk to you all today. This is ordinance, we're going to be discussing the Chapter 2 Administration, Article 7, Purchase and Sale of Real and Personal Property, which we call procurement ordinance because it's a lot quicker to say. So it's all about efficiency, right? We do periodically review it, and we're proposing some, excuse me, changes to streamline the procurement process, also to ensure their specific procurement methodologies pursuant to Florida statutes are mentioned within our ordinance, and to update or clarify languages within the sections. So the presentation is going to go, it's high level on the main items. There's some other housekeeping items and words. We did take the message from our workshop that we did on March 22, and in reference to the direct procurement, and also the staff cost proposal dollar threshold was removed, so it is not part of the ordinance. That does not being changed. The ordinance, main topic, Section 2-141 exclusion, which are exemptions. We enhance number five, which is artistic services, to address any construction-related items related to the artist that they may have someone that they work with. Also, item number eight, entertainment and entertainment-related services. Clarify for city-sponsored events. Give flexibility to our special events department to be able to engage the firms that they need to be able to do a successful event. Also, under Section 2-141 waiver procurement process, we wanted to add and clarify the city manager authority to waive within his dollar threshold. So it's only up to the $100,000 threshold. Anything over that, it will be brought up to council for approval. On Section 2-142 Responsibility and Authority, also, we wanted to add language for purchases that annually are less than the dollar threshold of 100,000, but normally they're continued two- or three-year term, so in totality, it would be over the $100,000 threshold. And we try to give a little example of a $60,000 contract, which is annual operational, but it's a three-year contract, so it's 180,000, and we tend to bring those items to council. So we wanted to, we're requesting to have language to allow the city manager to sign administratively those contracts. Section 2-144, small purchase, currently anything less than $5,000, $49.99 is one quote. We're requesting that threshold to be increased to less than $10,9,999. Based with inflations and things that we're seeing within the purchasing ability, we have seen that a lot of the purchases are around that threshold. And it works well for everyone. We do training for all of the certified GC buyers, the CAPs, and the departments to ensure that they understand the quoting is for specific projects, not necessarily to add up different projects together or split up. So we added some definition language to be clarity for that. On Section 2-144 is a new section. It's purchases of goods or services performed by private providers. We do solicitations to engage insurance companies, financial advisory companies, and within their repertoire, they're able to solicit proposals for insurance, let's say, medical or for banking and so forth. And we feel that they would be the best group to do those, and they work with our finance director or HR director. So it kind of streamlined that process to kind of where it's happening right now. Section 2-144, Consultant Competitive Negotiation Act, which of course we use the acronym CCNA because it's a lot shorter, right? And it's mainly that SAC, the Selection Advisory Committee, within the CCNA is mainly for projects engineering-based. We have used it for non-engineering, but the bulk of it, I would say 95% it is for engineering. So we are proposing changing the composition of the SAC. We do have directors in it, and the main change is removing the procurement manager as a voting member. I will still be the chair of the SAC. I will still be facilitating, but it would allow me to be able to have better discussion with all of the members of the SAC. Currently, I'm not able to because I am a member. So I have to use my staff to do any type of communication. And this way, we'll be leave there, and they can do more work. They can add projects to their repertoire. Also, the technical evaluation committee, we're just clarifying their role, and then just, just different housekeeping throughout this section. On Section 2-144, we added public-private partnerships, specifically in reference to the fee associated with qualified unsolicited proposal and the ability for council to waive that or reduce that. It's something we have done in the past. It was just not within our ordinance, so we wanted to add it, but we also wanted to ensure there was ability for council to either reduce it or waive it altogether. 2-146, Construction Contract and Supporting Documents. We're changing the word contract amendment to contingency, which is really what we use, what we bring to council. And the contingency is the additional monies, 5%, 10% of a project, to be able to address any unforeseen circumstance. There are times that they may be for added value, but that's mainly, that's within our ordinance. So it's just a change of word. And even this housekeeping, we wanted to bring it forward because it was from an audit perspective, and we just wanted to advise council we did change the word. Section 2-151, Standard of Conduct. We added cone of silence. We talk about it, it's within our, you know, documents, solicitations, but here clearly defines not only the word, but what you can and cannot do. And there'll be no confusion or, you know, they would know exactly any parties involved, stakeholder, internal, external, in reference to our solicitations. I put a summary of proposals of the proposed revisions of all of the revisions, not just the ones that I have addressed. And I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 25-23? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 25-23?
Motion to approve.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 26-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 26-23, an ordinance amending the Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Fire Prevention and Emergency Management, Article 2, Fire Prevention Code, Section 8-10, City of Cape Coral Fire Prevention and Protection Code Adopted, Amendments to Fire Codes Regarding Elevator Safety, Emergency Two-Way Communication Systems, and Radio Coverage for Critical Areas, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Chief.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director. So present out today, just want to also mention thank you to Councilmember Shepherd for bringing this issue forward for us to review and address. And also a thank you to Madam City Attorney and her staff for helping us craft this language. So the issue that is before us again today is what happens when you're stuck in an elevator and you go to push the button? Per the legal body that oversees that, it goes to somebody who has to take appropriate action. Now defining what appropriate action is, that can be just calling an elevator technician who might be in Naples or Benita Springs or Sarasota, and takes them a significant amount of time to get there. Where we, what this ordinance is going to do is require that appropriate action to also include that that company that they contract with has to contact the fire department's dispatch line and send a fire engine out there to be able to quickly get those individuals out of there. Again, you're trapped in this elevator. No cell phone, potentially, no air conditioning, no restroom, it can be an extended period of time. And just for edification, in 2021, we had 26 entrapments that we personally responded to, but we know we didn't get all of those calls. In addition, this ordinance also talks a little bit about first responder radio, so police and fire. When we're in an elevator shaft, it's literally a bunker, and so a lot of times our radios don't work when we're in those elevators. So just a little bit of background, where Florida statute covers this, and then it goes into this American Society of Mechanical Engineers. The building and fire codes are silent on these issues, and so that's where it's appropriate for us to step forward. Also, the Department of Business and Professional Regulations has a sub-technical committee that oversees elevator safety. Dale Delacast is our new fire marshal here for the city. He actually now sits on that committee and represents the city's interests and also trying to make our state a better place as it comes to elevator safety. So again, the proposed ordinance would take action for all of our current and new elevators that anybody who owns an elevator has to contract with or make arrangements for anybody who's entrapped to be able to have that two-way communication that would take that appropriate action to include contacting our dispatch number. And additionally, it would also require all new elevators to maintain a radio strength signal that would allow firefighters and police officers radios to work in those elevator shafts. And again, ultimately, our goal here is to be able to get anybody who's entrapped in an elevator rescued within minutes and ensure that, again, firefighter and police officers radios work when we're in elevators. Stand by for questions.
Thank you, Chief. I'll now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 26-23? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 26-23?
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Yes, sir, go ahead. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 10B is introductions. First one is ordinance 33-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 33-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 43-98 as amended by ordinance 8-06 and ordinance 58-18, which approved a planned development project in the City of Cape Coral, Florida entitled Santa Barbara Plaza East for certain property described as lots 12, 13, 14, and 15 of Block 1027, Unit 24, Cape Coral subdivision, and lots 8 through 11, Block 1027 inclusive, and a part of Lot 7, Block 1027, and all of lots 3 through 14, Block 1026 inclusive, Unit 24, Cape Coral subdivision, as more particularly described herein. Property located at 1025 through 1031 Santa Barbara Boulevard and 124 through 128 Nicholas Parkway East, modifying a landscape buffer requirement for the south property line from that approved previously by ordinance 58-18. Granting development plan approval pursuant to Section 3.4.8 of the City of Cape Coral Land Development Code, providing for findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for action on request and conditions of approval, providing for legal effect and limitations of this PDP development order and administrative requirements, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be April 19, 2023.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 31-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 31-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 29-04 as amended by ordinance 46-13 to authorize the city manager or the city manager's designee to enter into permissive use agreements on any real property owned by the city to allow work pertaining to public projects by governmental entities, contractors, and privy with governmental entities or organizations serving a public purpose in response to a declared state of emergency, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be April 19, 2023.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 32-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 32-23, an ordinance amending City of Cape Coral Ordinance 4-23, which amended ordinance 81-22, adopting the City of Cape Coral Operating Budget, Revenues and Expenditures, and Capital Budget for fiscal year 2023 by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of $71,577,214, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be April 19, 2023.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Steinke, report.
I just would like to make note that it was a tremendous trip to Tallahassee. Our representatives hear us. As you'd heard in our, in our update, our requests for funding for issues that are extremely important to our area were heard and are highly supported. So our lobbyists are doing a great job, and I appreciate all of fellow members of council took time out of their schedules to go up there and make sure that we had the type of presentation that we needed to show that we were all concerned and involved in the funding that we needed and the projects that are important to our city. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to go back through some of the stuff,
the stuff, and I don't remember the last time we did reports. So I attended the Kusahatchee Connect Groundbreaking. It was, it's a great project. Also, I was a guest speaker at the Lake Kennedy Groundbreaking, where we're going to have the new pickleball and tennis courts. Happy that that project is getting underway. Also, I did attend the National League of Cities up in Washington with two other council members, Council Member Cosden and Councilmember Hayden. We had great meetings up there with, with our Senate staff and with our Representative Donalds. We brought back some, some good ideas for next year that I'll be happy to share at workshop meeting. You know, going up with the National League of Cities was great, but a lot of the information that they had for us, I believe, was stuff that we've already worked with. So I think some of our ideas might be going up either earlier or later so that we can get that one-on-one time with our representatives. Also, I attended, while you guys were having fun up in Tallahassee, the Savitas Groundbreaking, which is the first of its kind apartment complex for affordable housing here in, in Cape. And there was a lot of work done within the city, within the county, to get this done. And the location and everything, I think, was a good fit for our city. And I'm proud that it's in my district. So with that being said, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try to be quick, but I did a lot in the past week or two. I attended the groundbreakings for the Kaluushahatchee Connect Fire Station 13 and Lake Kennedy Park. I also attended the Gator Trails Park ribbon cutting, and I spoke at the Nights of Inclusion Autism Awareness Walk at Norfolk Myers High School. I went to Tallahassee and DC, so it was a busy couple of weeks. And I think we had a lot of luck in both places, pushing projects forward for Cape Coral. And I want to say happy birthday to Councilmember Hayden. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings, report.
Yes. Well, happy birthday, Hayden. Sorry. Tallahassee, I feel like was a great trip for all of us. It was great to be part of, of the Capitol, of meeting so many great leaders here. And I feel like we got a lot accomplished in a short period of time. And it looks very promising, just like Councilman Steinke had stated. So I was very grateful and thankful to be there and the opportunities to meet, you know, our fellow state representatives and our senators. So I want to thank you, and happy Easter. Hopefully, everyone has a good Easter weekend as well, this weekend. So, thank you.
Councilmember Birthday Hayden.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but now I have to respond. So yes, the oldest member of council will get a year older next week. So thanks for reminding me to that. But just to echo real quick, I think the trips to DC and the trips to Tallahassee were very beneficial for our city in getting our agenda out and talked about, and our voices heard. So I think, I think they were productive for us. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo the same sentiments. I spent the last couple of days up in Tallahassee. I believe it was a productive trip overall. I did want to thank the gentleman that helped us from start to finish, all the way through the process, with Ballard and Becker. And I'm looking forward to see what the trip produced. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I just want to say that the tally to Tallahassee trip was a big success. I think we got our message out there of our wants and needs, and we have some great individuals up there working for us to achieve our goals. So thank you.
Thanks. I also attended the Kaluushahatchee Connect Groundbreaking Project with some of my fellow council members. Also presented a proclamation for the Believe in Girls Pace Center. Great organization, so I was gladly issued that proclamation for them. Also, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony of Station 13. A definitely, it's going to be a well-needed facility up in the northeast part of our city. On 3/24, participated in the Recovery Task Force meeting over in Fort Myers. 3/31, also issued a proclamation for National Procurement Month. Glad to see all the staff out there, and thank you for everything that you do throughout the year. So it was great to recognize them. Also attended the Gators Trail Ribbon Cutting, another great park that's online now. Many residents were out there utilizing it while we were there. The pickleball courts were packed. The playground kids were playing on it. So it's great to see the return on investment for these types of projects, when you go out and you see how well they are utilized. Also attended the sixth annual Touch a Truck event. That's always a great success each and every year down in South Cape. So I was glad to attend that. Again, with my colleagues, it was great to see how much that we got accomplished while we were out in Tallahassee. And I just wanted to give a thank you to all my colleagues. You know, I've been here a little over five and a half years now. And typically, it's myself and one other council member that go to the Tallahassee days. So it was great to see the representation that we had this time. Seven of the eight of us, of course, thank Councilmember Welsh for picking up the slack while we were gone. But it was great to see that type of engagement, because as we heard the last few days, the more in numbers, the more were heard. So I just want to thank each and every one of you for taking time out of your schedules as well. I also attended the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors meeting this morning. And when I finally got back here to Cape Coral, I just wanted to let our council members and our community know that it was more of a ceremonial event. But Pro Parks, who we partner with, with Sun Splash, they gave us the first check that we have received with that P3 partnership. As we all know, for many years, that was something that needed to be subsidized. But I am pleased to announce, today, we got a check from Pro Parks for $352,500. So definitely shows that that was the right decision that we made as a council. So it was great, great to see that. Madam City Attorney, report.
Mayor?
Counsel?
Brian Bartosz, Assistant City Attorney. As you know, the city is a party to a lawsuit entitled Waste Pro of Florida versus City of Cape Coral. Case number 23, CA 000034. Accordingly, pursuant to Section 286.011, Pren 8 Florida statute, I am requesting that the city council convene in a closed attorney-client session to discuss settlement negotiations and litigation expenditures. The session will be scheduled for Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, at 1:00 PM, if approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
My light is flashing. I hope you can hear me. We have April 8th is Bike Night from 5:00 to 10:00 on Southeast 47 Terrace. On April 12th, at 8:00 AM at Cultural Park, the city is partnering with Arbor Day Foundation Community Tree Recovery Program and Verizon to replant 60 trees that were lost as part of Hurricane Ian. So our staff submitted for a tree replacement program, a grant, and we received that from Arbor Day Foundation and Verizon. That is April 12th to 8:00 AM at Cultural Park. Following up on April 21st at 10:00 AM, we have the ribbon cutting for Cultural Park. So that will be yet one, one more park that was brought forward as part of the GOBON. And then Saturday, April 22nd, the City of Cape Coral is hosting a citywide Earth Day cleanup event. This activity is being sent out to every organization that we can think of in the city, any religious groups, church groups, any athletic teams. We partnered with Lee County School District to send emails to all the parents of the students. We are contacting FGCU, FSW, all of our businesses, our HOAs, basically asking the entire community to come out on Earth Day, which is Saturday, April 22nd, and donate, volunteer a couple of hours, just getting our city cleaned up from all the white paper, the cardboard, and the plastics that blew around during Hurricane Ian. So we, we got a majority of the major stuff up, but there's still some finishing touches. And there's no better day than Earth Day to get everybody out, do what you can for a few hours, and, and help clean up the city. You can sign up to be part of a list so that we can kind of figure out how many people actually helped at capecoral.gov. If you don't want to throw away the garbage you collect, or the litter that you collect, if you download our 311 app, you can report an actual geolocation of where you created a bag of refuse that needs to be picked up, and then staff will go around and collect that. So a couple of different ways to get rid of the material, and we're hoping that every resident and business is asked in one, two, or three different ways to participate. We're trying to get the word out. So I'm starting now, and I'll mention it at every meeting. April 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can we confirm that April 19th at 1:00 PM is all right for that meeting?
I was going to ask the, so that's the April 29th at 1:00?
April 19th.
April 19th at 1:00?
Does that work for, for everyone?
Okay. Madam City Clerk, could you add that?
And a motion. Your Honor, can I respectfully request a motion?
Sure. Could I get a motion?
I'll make the motion for a meeting on April 19th at 1:00 PM.
And that'd be a Shea meeting, correct?
Correct.
Second.
Yes, and it's an attorney-client session. Okay.
All right. All right. We have a motion in a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Motion carried.
Okay. All right. Next item is time and place of future meetings. We have a committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 12th, 2023, here at 9:00 AM. And council chambers, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.